Jerry Dockery to lead us in our invocation.
Mr. Mayor, I apologize for my tardiness tonight.
See, made you stay around.
And let's pray together. Father, we're thankful, thankful for this community we live in, and what a blessing it is that you've provided for us. And Lord, we're especially mindful as we gather for this occasion tonight, for those that serve in leadership, administration, city staff, so many people working together to give us the quality of life that is so important to us in this community. We pray that you continue to give wisdom and direction as they make decisions that influence all of our lives. We pray, Lord, we're mindful for those that keep us safe and pray that you would keep them safe, that you would bless their families and loved ones as they risk their lives to give us freedoms and protections. And Lord, we are mindful at this particular time of year as we remember those who have fallen protecting those freedoms, and we pray that they will never be forgotten and always be honored for giving the ultimate sacrifice. And we're grateful for a community that appreciates that as well. So we commit ourselves to you. Again, lead us and guide us and direct us is our prayer in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you very much. Okay, I would like to call our work session, a special called work session, and this is on a community conversation regarding Wood Road usage. And just before we can start, I'd like to make a comment. I want to make sure everybody knows, this is not to replace a stakeholders' meeting. There's been a lot of talk. We're in the process of future trail use plans and a future citywide trail system, which is forthcoming. We've certainly been open and transparent, want to make sure all our citizens and everybody is involved and their stakeholders involved and whatnot. That process is taking, has not started yet, is taking longer than we anticipated. So I want to make sure that it's very clear that those processes will still take place in the future. This came about last week. We had the city, some of the council and myself, as well as city staff, had been getting some concerns on Wood Road and with the trails and folks walking on there and other concerns. And so what I wanted to do was to be able to address those. So a lot of people have asked, well, why was this done so quick or whatnot? Well, the only reason we had this meeting quick because once I realized all those concerns and I met with the city manager and said, well, let's put it on a work session. Well, it would have been another month and a half, and then it was another three weeks before we had a meeting. So this meeting was set up just to try to start addressing some of these concerns and giving our citizens an opportunity to speak as well as share some information that we have. So again, that was the reason for the timeliness was just to, so we didn't have to wait too long and we could address it. So with that, and also, I'm sure we're going to have several comments, citizens' comments, and I'm going to suggest, sorry with the council, I'd like to do the presentation first because that may answer some questions, but it may also spur some more questions that you may have in the audience. So you may pick up on some information from the presentation, but it also may prompt you to ask some different questions, too. So if it's okay with the council, I'm going to hold public comment until after the initial presentation, and then we can always ask questions and get feedback. So we'll start with the presentation.
This is a community conversation regarding Wood Road usage. Mr. Steve Krokoff.
Mayor, if I could, I'd just like to turn it over to Parag Agarwal to start the presentation. I think there'll be, there are a few people involved with this, but Parag will lead it off.
Hi, I'm Parag Agarwal, City's Community Development Director, and today I also have with me our Police Chief, Chief Austin, interim Public Works Director, Sera Leaders, and our Principal Planner, Michelle McIntosh Ross. As you know, that this council work session has been designed so that the community can have a direct conversation with the city council members. But we have put together a small PowerPoint presentation that will help to move the conversation forward. So for my presentation, I have these topics which I will be covering. I will be starting with a very brief overview of the history of the trail planning in Milton, talking about the current considerations, some of the concerns which we have received from the Wood Road residents, some of the solutions that have already been implemented, and some of the future options. We are not recommending any options, but we have discussed some options, and we will be listing those options today. I firmly believe that some of the best solutions and the options come from the community members. So I'm sure you will be hearing many more solutions and options from the community today. And then there will be question and answers, and we can have the public comments after that. So after the city was incorporated in 2006, one of the first tasks which the city council did was to adopt the city's Trail Master Plan in 2007 because it was so high in the priority of the Milton residents. This Trail Master Plan of 2007 was developed by a nine-member committee, and I do see some of the members from this original stakeholders committee are here with us. And this 2007 Master Plan used the city's gravel roads, including the Wood Road, as the foundation of the overall planning. So I will say this 2007 plan was basically a policy document, but in 2009, the city went a step further and incorporated the trail standards into our city code. We were talking about the cross-sections and which side of the street the trail should go. So it was from policy document to more towards implementation into the city code. In 2012, the city adopted its first park master plan, and as part of this park master plan, the city again analyzed the trail plans of the city of Milton. And I will say at this time, for the first time, the city looked at the trails outside of the city's right-of-way. So basically, we were looking at the trails within the parks. And this time, the focus also switched to regional connectivity. In 2014, the city did a joint study with Alpharetta and North Fulton CID to explore short-term and long-term connections to Big Creek Greenway that would also provide a better user experience. In 2016, the city started its comprehensive transportation plan, and as part of the survey, the city's residents ranked walking and biking trails as number two on their priority list. So again, it was very high in the priority in 2007, and even after 10 years in 2016, when the survey was done, the walking and biking trails were still at one of the top priorities of the Milton residents. In 2017, the city staff worked on the Milton trails blueprint, and from this blueprint, it came, there were three loops that were discussed. One was this Crap Apple Loop, Santa Milton Trail, and the Deer Feet Loop. So these are some of the current considerations. So I will say the foundation of the trail planning in Milton is still the 2007 Master Plan that was basically put together by the Citizens Committee. After that, we have had a number of surveys that were done, but we didn't have any Citizens Stakeholders Committee working on a Trail Master Plan. Now, we also have multiple sources of funding, like TSPLOST. We also have this green space bond acquisition program in place that were not there in 2007. And this Milton Greens Committee also included the trails connections as part of their recommendations to the city council for the acquisition of the green space land. So as the mayor just mentioned, the city staff has heard some concerns from the Wood Road residents about the usage of the Wood Road. We have heard concerns like parking on the Wood Road. We have heard concerns that the pedestrians are walking right in the center of the Wood Road, and we have also heard concerns about the dogs are not on the leash. The city has already implemented some solutions. We have a custom trail signage, which you can see in this picture, which is installed on the Wood Road, addressing pedestrians, pedestrians, ATVs, and leash laws. So basically, education is already there. The council also adopted the designation truck routes in which no truck through traffic can be there on the gravel roads. The signs are there. The parking site assessment was recently completed our Public Works Department, and Sera will be talking to you more about this parking study in the later parts of this presentation. And our police department has also been very active on this Wood Road and increased Milton police presence during all shifts to document and address any violations. And Chief Austin is also here who can address any questions which come from the community. Now, talking about the future planning, the Trail Master Plan. As we all know, the city will be updating its Trail Master Plan very soon. When I first came to you in March, our timeline was the project was supposed to start in April, and we were supposed to have these community meetings in the month of May and June. But although the team is and was ready, and we do have a scope of work and everything, there were some administrative delays. First, we basically waited for the mid-year budget amendment to get passed, to get approved. And then, since we were expanding the scope of work, we also had to go through the procurement process. But finally, we do have everything ready, and this project will be starting on June 3. The contract will be in front of you on June 3, and this project will start in June 3. The timeline, the end date is still the same. So we are basically, although the start date has been delayed by two months, but we are trying to end this project in December of 2019. There will be eight community meetings from end of June to August, and we have already put together a stakeholders committee meeting, a stakeholders committee who will be working on this Trail Master Plan. So formally, although the project has not started, but we are working on this behind the scenes so that once the contract gets approved, we can schedule those community meetings, and we can schedule the meetings with our stakeholder committee members. These are some of the options which we discussed in our office. As I mentioned initially, that we are not recommending any of these options, and I'm sure you will be hearing many more solutions and options from the community members tonight. But we had this internal discussion, so we are just listing these options with pros and cons for each of these options. Number one, as per the city law, residents can petition the city to pave the Wood Road. Again, we all know the pros. It can reduce some pedestrian traffic because it will be much more geared towards the motorists, but the most biggest disadvantage is Wood Road is the community's asset. While it could reduce the pedestrian traffic, it may increase the appeal for motorists to use the road as a cut-through traffic. It may also increase density because right now, as per the zoning code, the minimum lot requirement is three acres for the gravel roads. But once we are paving it, that requirement will go away, and the density will increase to one acre per lot. Second option that we discussed was to petition the city to privatize and gate the Wood Road. Again, the advantage is it entirely eliminates the non-resident traffic on the Wood Road. The disadvantage is a decision requires 75% of the Wood Roads in favor. Again, it will be 75% of the residents living on Wood Road has to vote in favor of privatizing this road. Transitions or current and future costs associated with the maintenance and upkeep of the Wood Road from the Milton, from the city of Milton to the property owners residing on the Wood Road. So currently, the city maintains this road, and Sera will be giving you some numbers that will basically show what will be the transition of the cost from the city to these private property owners. Again, these are some of the numbers. So gravel road maintenance costs around $9,000 per year. The paving estimate, initial cost is around $460,000 repaid at 25 years, is $275,000, bridge and stormwater infrastructure. Again, the maintenance issues. Gravel road has a lot of maintenance, and these are some of the numbers which we have.
Sorry, Parag, that prior slide, that was just for Wood Road, or is that across all?
It's for the Wood Road. It's just for the Wood Road. The cost is $9,000 per year for the maintenance of the gravel road. The third option which we discussed was maybe a transition Wood Road from a two-way street to a one-way street. So we are not increasing any right-of-way width, but maybe we can have a one-way traffic, and the other half of the road can be used for pedestrians. Again, the advantage is this option would allow uses to be separated without modifying the cross-section. The cross-section width will remain the same. The disadvantage is to access to all wood properties would be one-way. The fourth option that we discussed was the Wood Road homeowners can establish a HOA, homeowners association. The advantage is this option would focus on addressing any unauthorized parking along Wood Road, but the disadvantage is, city attorney will talk more about how the process works for the HOA creation. No parking signs. We can basically put some no parking signs along the Wood Road to mitigate non-resident parking hazards. The advantage is this option would eliminate all parking in the designated areas. The disadvantage is this option not only limits non-resident parking, but it will legally prohibit any Wood Road resident parking on the Wood Road.
Parag, when you say Wood Road, you're also talking about Phillips Circle.
Phillips Circle, yes, yes. Now, I will invite Sera, who will be talking more about the parking assessment that was done on the Phillips Circle and the Wood Road.
So with our field-run topographic survey and boundary survey, we were able to look at the horizontal layout of Wood Road, Phillips Circle, and identify some areas that look to be limiting based on site distance and width of the road as well. Our code says that vehicles may park on roads of subsequent width unless specifically prohibited by signage. So Wood Road, starting at Birmingham Highway and going about to where the gravel surface begins, based on our survey, is about 14 feet wide. So that's one area we would look at restricting parking. There's two curves that were also identified, and I have graphics of those on the next slide. And then we also looked at the current alignment of the Phillips Circle parking lot. So the top image is, this is Birmingham Highway. So the shaded area represents that minimal width until it becomes the gravel surface. This is the first curve in question. This is the very end of the Fulton County Board of Education property. And just the visibility of looking around this curve and being able to see a parked vehicle. We'd want to field verify based on where there's vegetation, but this is an initial area that, again, it's the shaded area that we would look at restricting parking. The bottom graphic is the Freemanville Phillips Circle end. So currently, there's wheel stops and designated parking setback from Freemanville Road. Our code also has language about the setback for parking. It's typically related to non-residential uses. So it's the first kind of internal movement after you leave the major roadway should be 100 feet. And about from the middle of the travel lane of Freemanville Road to the first perpendicular space is 100 feet. But we've received some concerns from the homeowner that lives at Phillips Circle in Freemanville about the parking and looking at modifying that to more of a parallel space that can be within the right-of-way. The other curve in question is where Phillips Circle and Wood Road intersect. So again, we can patch to the end of the driveway here and just around the curve to look at restricting parking in that area.
Mayor, if you have a question, we are here to ask any questions for the city council.
Okay, I'm going to open up questions with council for staff, then also, once we hear public comment, have an opportunity, too, to also ask more questions. So go ahead, Joe. Thank you. Parag, I just wanted to double-check something. You had put up a slide that basically stated that the maintenance for Wood Road is about $9,000 a year, and if the road were paved, the maintenance would be adjusted about $11,000 a year. Wouldn't always be done every year because it only gets repaved every so often, but did I understand those numbers correctly?
Councilmember, if I could just jump in. That's the only slide on this presentation. I have not had a chance to review. It came in just before the meeting. That's Sarah's business. I know her business, but she knows it. But that is the first time I've ever seen a number come in like that, that would say it over 25 years, that the maintenance of gravel road would cost. But please, Sarah, I'm not trying to, what did you find?
So we took, over the last 10 years, what we spent on gravel road maintenance, took the total miles of gravel road and the portion that Wood Road is, it's 10% of our gravel road mileage. And we looked at, we tracked kind of how many hours we spend grading, how much material, and it's pretty relative to the percentage that the road makes up of the overall. We do spend a little more time and material on those longer connector roads, wood and mix. So that's where we got the 10%. And the $90,000 over the last 10 years, again, that's what we have spent in the past. I did put the slide in of the cost of the current equipment rentals we have. So that's just based on the last 10 years. So that's Wood Road's percentage at 9,000 a year. And then on the paving, if it was paved, there's going to be an upfront cost of, we calculated that for a full-depth reconstruction, so building the base and the pavement surface for around $400,000. And then typical subdivision streets are 20- to 25-year life. So then we looked at, after that initial cost, how long the pavement would last until it needed to be resurfaced.
Anybody else?
Okay, a quick question. When was the, staff, when was that parking added? What year was that additional parking pad added?
I believe it was 2016.
And what, I guess, was that driven by the community wanting to access Wood Road, or is that?
I think there was already some parking going on there, and we worked out placing the wheel stops. They're actually outside the right-of-way, but worked out in agreement with that property owner to formalize those spaces. It would help with the use of that shoulder that was already being parked on and protected his fence a little more.
So that was a council decision in 2016. Is that fair to say?
I doubt that came before council.
Oh, okay, okay.
The question is, now I'll open up to public comment.
Are we going to hear from Chief Austin? I have a parking question. So the parking that's at Phillips Circle, that's legal, correct?
Yes, as it stands, it's legal.
Okay, so if we, and if, other than the areas that we were to designate as per being directed, can parking, can you parallel park on Wood Road? Is that legal?
It is permissible, as it stands now.
Unless there's a sign there?
Correct.
Okay.
I mean, certainly cars can't obstruct traffic or be in the middle of the road in that. Emergency vehicles have to have ingress and egress.
So if signs were put up, then at that point, that's when you could write a ticket?
Yes, we would be able to take appropriate enforcement action, whether it be a warning or a ticket or what have you.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Anything else from staff or public?
No parking, right?
Well, we rely certainly on engineering to help us with site distance and those kind of calculations that are sort of out of the purview of the police department. But at this point, we didn't observe anything of immediate public safety concern as far as the parking. I think what Parag was trying to tease out of that was that we can't just, for aesthetic reasons, on a city street, designate no parking. There has to be a public safety underpinning to that, like what Sarah had pointed out, limited site distance, where it tightens up, things along those lines.
Anything else for now? And again, once we have public comment, we can determine the discussion. All right, I'll open up to public comment. City?
Our first speaker is Mrs. Judy Byrds.
Hi, Judy Byrds, 1165 Brain Drive, Milton, Georgia. Lived there for 12 years. Much has transpired since the original trail plan and even since its updating, most notably the acquisition of land under the green space bond, which continues, and the identification of the need to purchase additional land for active park use. It is my recommendation that the city focus on, first, the development of trails within Milton Country Club, which I believe will divert a lot of the demand and usage off of Wood Road. The longtime residents did not buy their beautiful bucolic three-plus-acre lots on Wood Road to become a public park. When I first moved here, the idea was Wood Road was great. There's farms, there's horses. If people want to ride, girls and boys want to ride their horses from one farm to another, it was something they could do. And on the times that I would visit people there, it was kind of nice to see, you know, people out riding their horses along Wood Road. It is part of our beautiful rural settings. Do not pave it. Otherwise, in five years, we will be here talking about a roundabout in front of Birmingham Elementary School and a roundabout at the end of Phillips Circle, when we have just invested money for roundabouts that would allow traffic to process on either Freemanville or on Providence, or not Freemanville, Birmingham Road. So I say, seek to find alternatives for those people. Let the people on Wood Road use the road there. Let other people who may choose to use it, use it. Somebody can come and walk in our neighborhood. We have sidewalks there, and on occasion, we see some folks. But do not promote it as an active park. I think the city should also work and focus on seeking to connect neighborhoods with walking access to nearby park. Bell Memorial Park, Gray Park, very few neighborhoods can walk to it. Extending the sidewalks to allow those folks to use them or to be able to walk over to the Milton Country Club trails may also divert some of that use. I also think that it's time to reevaluate the trail plan. I don't even know why Wood Road is part of this trail plan. What purpose is it trying to serve? Are we trying to allow kids to walk to Birmingham Falls along Wood Road? I don't know why that trail is there. But we have alternatives now with additional land and additional planning. I think we could find other ways to meet what was originally envisioned for Wood Road to get from west to east or east to west. to get from west to east or east to west. So I think we have to reconsider why we're doing that, and really step back and look at the whole trail plan and reassess to try to both serve the needs of folks like myself that enjoy walking, and allow access to walking without putting an unusual burden on a single neighborhood or road. Thank you.
Thank you. Should if you please call next speaker?
Next speaker is Donna Johnson.
Good evening. My name is Donna Johnson. I live in Potterstone, which is a neighborhood off of Thompson Road, and we've lived there for 20 years. And I actually am just coming sort of to speak for people like me who tend to walk on Wood Road. My friends and I walk there a lot of mornings, been doing it for years. I actually didn't even know it was part of the trail thing until somebody said, "I'll meet you on the Milton Trail." And I said, "Where's the Milton Trail?" It's always been Wood Road to me. But I have heard some concerns about people talking about, you know, walking in the middle of the road with their headphones on, and dogs chasing, you know, other animals. And I appreciate that that is completely, you know, inexcusable. So I'm hoping that we can come up with some sort of a compromise here so everyone can coexist a little bit. I mean, I walk during the weekday mornings generally, and there's not that many people there. It's mostly moms and strollers. So I'm hoping that everybody can sort of, you know, not make this into, you know, a giant, we have to pave it, we have to gate it, maybe we can come up with some compromise so that everybody can be a little happier with it. So that's, I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Should if you please call the next speaker?
Next speaker is Luz Felice Cardamon.
Could I defer line place to Dr. Maloney first, and then go after him?
Okay. Thank you.
That's fine.
Next speaker is Brian Maloney. And I am in possession of an affidavit stating that he is authorized to speak on behalf of Wood Road Homeowners Association.
Mayor, council, thank you very much for your time and service. Really appreciate this opportunity. I stand before you as a nominated representative from the Wood Road Homeowners to share consensus of ideas and some solutions. Also, by way of background, I was the chairman of the Milton--
Can I break in, excuse me, just for the record, if you state your name and address?
Sure, sorry. Brian Maloney, 14430 Wood Road.
Thanks.
I was also the chairman of the Milton Trail Committee from its inception until when it was rolled into the parks and rec. So we spent a lot of time on that. Our first issue, parking. What was interesting was when we first rolled the gravel roads into the trail system, parking on the road was never even a concept. The whole concept was to park the trailheads, which at that time were the schools. If the city deems it appropriate to park along the northern Phillips Circle junction, we would ask that parking be limited. We want to share as well. It's a beautiful road. But we would ask that the parking be limited. I think currently, the area can hold about seven to eight cars. Overflow parking can then go to the summit, Birmingham Falls Trailheads. We've heard a lot tonight about parking along the road, and I really don't understand that concept because it is listed as the Milton Trail, so we cannot treat this as any regular road. This has to be given special exception. You've heard a lot about safety and everything, you know, it's great to see horses, kids, bikes on the road, and then you want to add cars on the side of that as well? It doesn't make sense. So I think that the 12 years of safety with the road being in the Milton Trail system speaks a lot for the low incidence of any event and stuff. But I really think that council needs to pass a special ordinance designated that any gravel road in the trail system has, it has special rights. And so that includes parking along the side of the road. So as a community, we envision having limited parking, and then assign no parking beyond this point. We also would like to see dusk-to-dawn parking. There's no reason anyone should be parked there in the evening, and we see some cars parked there in the evening. Our community is very opposed to any development of a trailhead or parking lot along the Birmingham end of the road, also very opposed to paving. The volume of cars, what's fascinating to me is when we rolled out the trail plan and put the gravel roads in, the concept was, okay, 15 miles an hour speed limit. You turn on the Phillips Circle from Freemenville, and the first thing you see is a 25 mile an hour sign. Let's lower that to 15 miles per hour along any gravel road that is used in the trail system. In the old days, we also had no turn signs from Freemenville and Birmingham onto road during certain hours to restrict some of the school traffic. Those were taken down, but I would ask that we revisit those. The speed humps were funded by the homeowners. We put those in. We went to Georgia Tech, they engineered specifically the width of these, size, shape, and everything, as a traffic calming measure. But we've seen the graders over the years widen them, and that decreases one component of the effectiveness of that hump. So we'd ask that the graders stick to the actual hump. We also have a homeowner on the far end who highlighted an issue where someone coming from Birmingham Highway is on the paved section of the Wood Road, and then when they hit the gravel, man, they're sailing. And so they've asked for a speed hump there. If it's not in the budget, the homeowner is offered to fund that as well, but we would need--
One minute remaining.
Okay. Let's see, replacement of the one-lane bridge should be with a one-lane bridge. Make the intersection of Wood and Phillips a three-way stop. The trailhead signage is extremely important, as well as installing a pedestrian equestrian bridge at the Phillips Circle Summit intersection. That will divert some of the traffic off of the Wood Road. Safety issues, trimming the brush on the north side of Freemenville for easy in-and-out access. And I love that, the community rules sign, but I think you have to be an ex-basketball player to read it on the Phillips Circle side, so if that could be lowered to a more standard height, we'd appreciate it. But thank you very much for your consideration on this matter, and we look forward to working on a resolution. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, city, if you'd please call the next speaker.
Ms. Luz Felice Cardamon.
Good evening. My name is Luz Velas Cardamon at 14540 Wood Road. I'd like to second what Dr. Maloney suggested regarding modifying the intersection of Phillips and Wood Road and putting consistent speed signs, so 15 miles on, you know, coming off of Phillips, coming off on Wood, and also installing an additional stop sign, because there is no stop in the other two directions, so that's a situation. Also, the lack of visibility when you're turning from Phillips onto Freemenville, not only clearing some of that brush that's growing there just generically, but also installing maybe 100 yards before you get to Phillips, blinking lights. And speaking with another homeowner, that was something that she thought could be very helpful. If you're coming on Freemenville towards Red Road, and you, for example, my son has a three-horse trailer and is churning onto Freemenville, the cars are coming at such velocity on that curvature that they could easily slam into any car exiting onto that area. The gentleman highlighted earlier that there is a sign that has some protocol right where the parking is currently located. I don't believe there's any other signage on Wood Road kind of stating the courtesies that are expected on Wood Road. So one sign just doesn't cut it. I think in the city parks, you have beautiful garbage cans. I'm not sure why we have a garbage can that looks like it belongs in a janitorial facility attached with a chain to a post at Phillips. I think we, the residents, deserve more than that with the, you know, at that location. Also, along that line of signage, I'd ask that the city council go to the city, to the education board and request that the signs that they've put that are probably less than $5 each, that say no trespassing onto their property that is directly in front of our land, across from also the Wilson property, be something of commercial grade, similar like you would see at any park or any other place, other than a, you know, a Home Depot $5 sign that deteriorates the look of the community. Also, a mirror was suggested by one of the other residents, like a reflective or, you know, type of mirror when you're exiting onto Freemenville, so you can kind of see what cars are coming along that curve. Going back to the school board, talking to their Department of Transportation, and inquiring, why is it that school buses are using Wood Road as a cut-through when, obviously, if there's a child that needs to get on one of those school buses, that school bus should be going down that gravel road, but not the velocity at which the school buses continue to travel, and then put on their brakes when they're about to hit the hump, causing further deterioration of the gravel roads and the enormous potholes that are being created. And I would say, you know, in the spirit and the essence of what the city of Milton has on its first page of their website, and maintaining the equestrian beauty, et cetera, et cetera, you know, the residents and property owners of Wood Road, we pay substantial taxes, we've made huge investments in terms of the cost of our properties, we maintain our properties, which is what creates the beauty of Wood Road, and we pay enormous costs to our landscapers or even ourselves, the time that we put into making it beautiful. So, you know, we want to share that beauty with others. Want to share that beauty with others, but by the same token, I think there needs to be some level of respect and consideration put to us, the homeowners, that are there. And for the record, at 5:45, 6 o'clock yesterday evening, there were 15 cars parked in that area on Phillips, right off of Freemenville. So while maybe the police or other people that are observing think that there's not a lot of cars, on a Sunday night, most people would be at home. 5:45, 6 o'clock, 15 cars. So I respectfully thank you for listening to my comments.
Sure, thank you. Should if you please call the next speaker.
That is all we have for public speaking. I do have one comment to read into the record. That individual is here this evening. That is Ms. Elise Gia at 14745 Wood Road. I would like to see the parking limited to the existing on Phillips Circle, and no further parking or development or emphasis added to Wood Road, which has borne the entire burden of the Milton Trail system. And that is it.
Okay, and it looks like we just got one more comment. If you could take a peek at that.
Is it okay that we take this?
Well, that's our, council, is council okay, even though it's after the--
Okay.
Okay.
Hi, thank you for taking that. Apologies, this is my first time. I'm actually a new landowner on Wood Road.
Let me break in one second. Is it Malone?
Malone.
Malone, if you would just, for the record, just state your name and address.
Yes, Tammy Malone, 1477 Wood Road.
Thank you.
Yes. Yes, and I just want a second and third, I guess, what has been said about safety on Wood Road. I have three children. We bought the far piece of property that is closest to the school district, where they had shown the picture where it kind of has a sharp curb. Since we have purchased that, we often hang out at the land daily, and the children are playing. And as we open the gate and coming in and out of our property, there's constantly cars flying around that corner at really intense speeds, to be honest. My 11-year-old has opened and closed the gate multiple times, and I've been afraid that he was going to be hit and has even been honked at. So that is a concern, and my husband and myself, we've talked about even putting in a speed bump. We've contacted city council about that, and they sent us the requirement paperwork to fill out. And we even said that we would pay for that ourselves, just because that was something we felt was a safety concern. I guess the amount of traffic, too, we sit there and notice during rush hour, that it is being used as a cut-through. And part of the beauty and the reason that we moved there, we enjoy saying hello and talking to walkers and bikers, and to see the cars just flying by kind of, you know, takes away from the beauty and the charm and the reason that we fell in love with it. And then I guess another issue, we were sitting and observed just recently a truck coming through and spraying calcium carbonate all over the road, and weren't really sure what, you know, I'm not a chemist on what that was, so we looked it up and noticed that if inhaled, you know, it is toxic, and it does cause breathing problems, and safety concerns to animals and people. So just wanted to bring that up, and kind of wondered why that's happening. I didn't know if anyone can answer that question?
Not in this format, but--
Okay.
You can get back with you on that.
Okay, sorry about that. And then, yeah, I think just again, on the parking, we live on the far end, away from, I guess, where the main parking is, but often see two, three cars parked just before the turn. So just to address the parking on the road itself.
Okay.
That's it. Thank you.
And welcome to Milton.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Okay, so do we, that's all our public comment.
That's awesome.
I'd like to open back up to staff and council. First one to ask, unless, Steve, if you've got anything you want to add, I was gonna ask Police Chief Too to respond to, you know, we've had some concerns, and the police have been out there and has done some reports, so wanted to see if we could get some feedback from our police chief.
We'd received a complaint, or rather extensive email back on April 9. So during that time, we took 30 days and intensified patrols in the area, conducting on Wood Road over the month, 150 patrols on Wood, 70 on Phillips Circle, for a total of 220 patrols. During that time, we only, we didn't observe any violations. We had three calls for service during that time that were unrelated to the outstanding concerns.
Okay.
We've put our resources up there. We have new public safety ambassadors that have also been in the area, and we've also videoed as we've gone through the area, in case that may be helpful to anyone in the future.
And I guess that's something we can concentrate moving forward, too. All due respect to the citizens, I know it's always like when you take your car in for, if something's wrong with it, then it doesn't do it. Obviously, I'm sure there are issues, and then you get there and it's not there, so. But if we could move it forward, keep, you know, more emphasis on that to try to watch that.
And certainly, our police officers are more than willing to educate folks about the road and the rules associated in the area. But at this point, like I said, three calls for service, we've done a few traffic stops on there. But I've made some notes, based on some of the things I've heard tonight, that we may be able to address, you know, for instance, with the schools, and that we work very well with them, and be happy to reach out on behalf of the citizens of the area to try to mitigate the school, at least the school buses, and the other things that we've heard, I'll pass along in our calls.
Okay, and that's a good point. I want to make sure the public realizes that. Part of this process, this is just a work session, so a lot of the communication and what we're hearing tonight, we can go back and take a look at. So this is beneficial. It's not, being a work session, it doesn't mean we're gonna have all the answers tonight, and it's an end-all, but we're certainly collecting feedback and communication, so. Is there any questions for chief, for the chief on this? Anybody, council? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
And then I'll just make a statement, too, and I think all of us feel this, and I know some of the folks that spoke publicly, you know, concerned about the traffic and the increase in traffic, and, you know, I think most all of us feel that. I know when I moved here 25 years ago, we'd ride our horses up and down the road, and walk and whatnot, and, you know, now there's tons of cut-through traffic, and I wouldn't even think about doing that. So again, I think a lot-- So again, I think a lot of, as part of the growing pains, everybody wants to move to Milton, so it's so great, and then, but they don't want anybody else moving here. So it's, we deal with that not only on just Wood Road and our gravel roads, but we're dealing with that elsewhere, too, on our main connections, so...
So we heard a lot of great ideas here tonight, and in fact, Ken's looking up something right now, maybe if we can, and we'll go further into it, about redesignating some of our gravel roads so that they might not be treated, if they're part of the trail plan, as regular city right-of-ways, which is what they are currently legally. There were a bunch of other great ideas that came out, the no-turning during certain hours, which could help start preventing the issues associated with rush hour, school traffic, and things along those lines, things that we can start working on in the meantime. But I'm hopeful that as we get into the trail planning process, that everybody comes out and gets involved, gets, the more involvement they have, the more upfront information they have, and the more impact they have upfront, the more ability they'll have to be able to shape the future of our trail plan. A lot of things have changed, has been brought up by the other speakers that came up and a lot of what you brought up. Things have changed since 2007. We do have properties now that, some of which have trails kind of ready to go, and others that with a little bit more investment, we can get trails on them as well. Maybe the environment's changed a bit, and we need to relook, which is why we did the stop on the original trail planning. And we are going to be taking now a citywide reassessment, look at where we can recommend future investment in trails, where the most possible people can take advantage of those. And then obviously, all those recommendations will come before council, and you'll be able to make your decisions on where you want to see those improvements and that funding go.
Okay. And I'll reemphasize it. This actual work session was not, you know, again, we went through the history a little bit, and as things change, as Dr. Maloney said, you know, back in 2007, 2008, things were a lot different, a lot less people. Again, as Steve just mentioned, we have stepped back on our overall trail plan and are, will be looking at that. Obviously, there'll be plenty of input there. That being said, you know, things may change, and we've got more parkland, there may be, it's spread out, it may take some use off of Wood Road. But tonight's meeting, the intent was to really try to adjust some of the current issues that are happening now. And what I'm hearing, and council chime in, too, is parking issues, speed, you know, some enforcement, and also some maintenance of the roads, but those seem to be the key. Is there other things that you guys heard?
Courtesies. Yeah, courtesies along the road.
Anybody, is there some other concerns that we'll get staff to look at, Laura?
Well, I wanted to congratulate Dr. Maloney on becoming the first HOA president on Wood Road, so thank you so much for stepping up. That's awesome. But that list, that was a great list, and I know I rode as fast as I could, and others had great ideas here, and I think we're all here in the spirit of looking to find the solution that suits the beauty of Wood Road. And, you know, just going back to the parking, all of those suggestions, it was good to hear your suggestion about the trailheads and trying to suggest the schools that are already existing. One of my questions that I'd like to look into is if we can direct people to Birmingham Falls and make it easier to come from that back parking lot. There's a very natural entrance for walkers if they were to park there, and if we need to get permission from Birmingham Falls and perhaps try to do an IGA. I know we were trying to do that with the Fulton County property to offload parking from the Wood Road, Wood Phillips Circle. I wanted to also ask some questions about speed enforcement because I'm all for dropping the speed limit as far down as we can get and so that we can enforce it. And we talked about maintenance last session, and I'd love to have another, you know, conversation with the folks that live on the road, because I know when we had our horses over there, the smoother and well-grimmed the roads were, the faster people went and the more they cut through. So, and to get to the perfect, you know, the sweet spot on, you know, I, we have a gravel road up at the lake, and the more pits and washboarding there is, the slower you drive, and it's not convenient to drive through there when your car bottoms out. So these are the things that I hope that we can look to discuss more in the stakeholder meetings, and I just appreciate everyone coming here in the spirit of conversation and dialogue to get the best possible solution.
And I would add, Dr. Maloney will memorialize his comments as he spoke for the neighborhood or the road residents. So obviously, if we can memorialize that, those were some good points, so...
We will, and Parag and Dr. Maloney have created a friendship here, so I anticipate that the conversations will continue. Mayor and council, if I could, just the one thing that was concerning and was just a health concern that was brought up. Sarah, could you just address what we use for the dust control?
Sure. We use a calcium chloride treatment, and we recently researched that. If it's highly concentrated on lawns, it's basically like a salt-type product, and so in high concentrations, it can affect the grass on lawns. But as it's diluted and runs off, it's actually naturally found in some lawn fertilization as well as some food products. So we have researched that recently and don't believe it's a health concern.
Okay. Thank you. And just for, I think it was Ms. Malone that made the comment, during public comment, it's a time for people to give their comments, but it's not a back-and-forth. But afterwards, that's what I said, we could get your question answered. Anything else from council?
I just have, I'm sorry, one more comment, just for folks that are tuning in late. We had, you know, the discussion of side paths, and I just wanted to reiterate from my perspective, and I think I speak for most everyone up here, that those are no longer being considered because that was what spawned the kickoff of reevaluating the trail plan and looking, because that was an outcrop of some of those plans. So now, those are not being considered.
There's nothing on the table now. It's all going back to the planning process.
Thank you.
Okay. And that was one communication we wanted to make sure everyone knows, that, you know, it is starting from scratch. And again, those side trails were an engineering exercise just to look at options, but those were never, staff nor council was pushing any of that. So, you know, again, it would just be presented as an option, but there was no push to put side trails in at this point or consider them, though. Anything else staff wants to add, or Ken? Okay. All right. Well, thank you.
Thank you.[1705.41]